Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett, I'm the Town Clerk-Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack National Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Because we have the opportunity to do a virtual meeting, there's a special script announcement that I have to read into the record to provide information for everybody, so let me do that. As Chair of the Merrimack Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 crisis, in accordance with Governor's send in his emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing either of the following phone numbers: 1-312-626-6799, or 1-929-205-6099, and the meeting ID 915-4391-5457. The meeting may also be viewed on Merrimack TV Channel 20 on Comcast Cable, or Merrimack TV Facebook Live page, which is www.facebook.com/merrimacktv. By providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided in the meeting agenda posted on the Town of Merrimack's website at www.merrimacknh.gov/planning-board. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access, if anybody has a problem, please email C-Wolfe, W-O-L-F-E, at merrimacknh.gov. C-Wolfe@merrimacknh.gov, if you have any trouble with access to the meeting. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll-call attendance. Will each member please state your name and that you're present, and please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law? Let's see, Nelson, you go first.
Okay, my name is Nelson Disco, I'm speaking from my home, I'm the only one here.
Alistair.
My name is Alistair Milns, I'm speaking from my home too, and there is nobody in the house.
Neil.
My name is Neil Anketell, and I am in company with my wife.
Okay, are there any other Planning Board members on the line other than myself? I am the Chair, my name is Bob Best, I'm speaking from my home, there's nobody else in the room at the moment, but my family is all here and could walk through anytime. I'm sure they'll be interested in sitting at the edge of their seats for every word. Now, they probably won't join us. Okay, that covers our required announcement for this. We'll just have to remember that we're required to do roll-call votes as we go through this. So we've called the meeting to order, we'll put Nelson into a voting position in for Paul McLaughlin's seat. I think we may have Lynn Christensen join us, and perhaps Bill Boyd later, see how that goes. For participation during the virtual meeting, you need to participate, follow the instructions that are on the meeting agenda, the phone number that's on the bottom of the screen for either the Comcast Cable or the Facebook Live, and if you'd like to speak, you use star nine to quote "raise your hand," and then we'll note that you'd like to speak, and we'll call on you during the public hearing part of that. It's only during the public hearing part of it. Let's make sure that when you speak, you clearly introduce yourself, identify your name, and provide your address before you speak, so that we can capture that for the record. That completes the call to order, and therefore, the next item on our agenda is our Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report. Casey, do you have any report for us tonight?
Not much for you guys tonight, just the regional impact determination recommendation, and that we recommend the Gilmer subdivision, Telltale Tattoo site plan, and the Granger subdivision are not, are all not of regional impact.
Okay, what's the will of the Board with respect to those recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, this is Alistair Milns, I make a motion that we accept the Board's recommendation and decide that none of those matters are of regional impact.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I will second that, Mr. Chairman, Nelson Disco here.
Nelson Disco seconds the motion, is there any further discussion by Board members? If not, then let's have a roll-call vote. Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote aye, in favor.
Alistair, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Neil Anketell, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And I also vote in favor, Bob Best, so that is 4-0-0 to uphold the staff's recommendations on regional impact. Casey, anything else that you have in your Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report?
Nope.
Okay, I will offer up at this time just a chance to recognize all that the staff has done, as well as Nick and Justin with Merrimack TV to get the technology together, and let us try this little experiment and figure out how to do some remote meetings. I think it's exciting to be able to tackle this. Nelson, I see your hand up.
Yes, there's one thing I would ask of the staff, if Casey could just give us a little rundown on how the office is operating during this period, are you open during the day, can people come into the office? Just a little bit of overview of what's going on in the Town Hall, because I haven't been there since February.
Yeah, sure, no problem, so just starting, I believe it was yesterday, if, yes, yesterday, the members of the public can now come into the building, members of the public do need to wear face masks to come in, and we do have plexiglass covering all the counters, so that we can socially distance with the employees. Up until this week, the Town Hall has been closed to the public, and we have been operating primarily via phone and email, and going about our daily business, helping the public, reviewing applications, just like we normally would, just without any in-person contact. We did receive some applications for both the zoning board and the planning board over the past few months, in which we did preliminary reviews to keep business moving, so not until today, tonight, have any action been able to been taken by the Board.
Okay, thank you, I thought that would be interesting to me and probably to the public as well, thank you.
Absolutely, and I'm glad that we're able to get together and have a meeting, and I know that there isn't a ton of stuff on our agenda, but there's certainly important projects for folks, and when we finally do get the all-clear from COVID and able the people to resume some work on projects or gathering in places, I don't want the Planning Board to be holding up any of those works. I want to make sure that we've done our business and taken care of, I view the people that apply to us as customers of the Board, and taking care of their work. So thank you to the staff, thank you to Merrimack TV folks for doing that, and I'm glad to be here doing it. I hope that the virtual meeting format works out for everybody pretty well. I think we're able to have people at home more easily participate if they choose to when we have this kind of a format. Are there any other items that the Board would like to raise with staff? Seeing none, we're up to item number three on our agenda, which is Petroleum Marketing Group, Inc., as the applicant and owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of a site plan to raise and rebuild an existing gas station and convenience store. The parcels located at One Continental Boulevard in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4D, Lot 54-1, it is planning case number Planning Board 2020-06, and it is continued from our March 3, 2020 Planning Board meeting. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Not much, just a reminder that at your previous meeting for this application, you did not vote to accept this application, and you did not vote on any of the waivers, so that does need to be done tonight.
Excellent, thank you, Casey. Who is the applicant and representative of the applicant here tonight?
Mr. Chair, this is Courtney Hersch, she and Finney, I'm sorry, I can't restart my video, I think the host has to restart it.
Let's see if I can do that. Doesn't seem that I've got the choice to do your video, oh, somebody did it, there you are.
There we are, excellent. Well, thank you again, my name's Courtney Hersch, I'm with she and Finney, the attorney for the applicant. With me tonight are several folks that hopefully can answer any questions that may come up, so Ron Lazat from Mazer Consulting, the engineers on the project is with us, and also Gary Kilfther and Armand Kurian from the applicants themselves, so we're all here tonight to hopefully be able to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Excellent. Courtney, do you need to have the ability to do a presentation or put any video visuals on screen?
I don't think for myself, I think depending on what questions you folks have, we might need to put the plans on the screen, but I think just for the basic presentation I plan to do, I don't need that.
Okay, ready, set, go.
Great, thank you. Folks, we're very pleased to be back here tonight to discuss the proposed gasoline station at the corner, and convenience store at the corner of Continental Boulevard and Camp Sergeant Road. When we were last with all you folks at the beginning of March, you may recall, we discussed six waiver requests, three of them dealing with parking lot impact mitigation, and three dealing with parking lot and gas station lighting. Since then, we've discussed several aspects of the plan, we've received comments from DPW and from Fuss O'Neil, we have updated the plan to respond to various issues raised there and raised at our meeting last time, and we have submitted the revised plans to you folks, along with some specific responses to issues that were raised in each of those places. In addition to those waiver requests that we discussed at the last meeting, there are two additional requests included in our pending application that I just wanted to go through briefly here tonight. The first one deals with the driveway location on Continental Boulevard. As you know, the ordinance calls for driveway access points to be at least 100 feet from each other, and the proposed plan that you have before you requests a waiver that would allow the driveway on Continental Boulevard on this site to be 92 feet from the access point from the neighboring parcel. As we noted in our application, we submit that the proposed application is actually, actually would better accomplish the spirit and intent of the regulations than would strict conformity with regulations. This is because requiring, moving the driveway to be 100 feet would push the driveway closer to the busy intersection with Camp Sergeant Road, closer to the traffic signals, and would increase it in a less safe condition. In fact, in their comments on our earlier submission, DPW noted that moving the driveway further from the traffic signals would be their preferred solution, and so that's what's reflected here in the proposal. And then, the last requested waiver is a request that the Board waive the provision that requires a public entrance to be located on all sides of a public building that faces an abutting public street. Specifically, as this project is proposed, the convenience store does not have a public entrance on the side that faces Camp Sergeant Road. Again, here, I would submit that the proposed design actually better carries out the spirit and intent of the regulations than would strict conformity. Here, the drive-through lane is located directly next to the building on the side that faces Camp Sergeant. We submit that that would make a public entrance on that side of the building a safety risk, as we would be concerned about pedestrians crossing in front of cars in the drive-through. Moreover, frequently, it's preferred to only have one public entrance for a gas station convenience store for security purposes. Given the location of the site and the proposed design, we do not anticipate that the lack of a public entrance on the east side of the building would cause any confusion or inconvenience or any, any problems in this instance. Because we discussed the other six waivers at the last meeting, I don't intend to use the Board's time to reiterate what was previously said, but of course, happy to talk about those or the two I just covered if there are any questions.
Just for the folks that may not have been here, but last time, or members of the public that may not have been here, just quickly go down the list of what it is that you're asking for, you don't necessarily need to argue for them or justify them, but just give a sense of the other six that you're asking for.
Certainly, so the first three, as I said, are kind of grouped together, they have to do with parking lot impact mitigation, so from, we're asking for waivers from the section that requires 10% of the overall interior area of the parking lot, that being located in front of the principal building, to be dedicated to landscape areas, from the section that states that shade trees will be provided around the perimeter of all parking areas at a minimum ratio of one tree per 20 feet of perimeter, and from the portion of the ordinance that requires shade trees to be set back at least five feet from the curb. So those are the first three. The second set of three have to do with parking lot and gas station lighting, so we're requesting a waiver from the section that provides that the maximum illumination level at the property lines shall be no more than .2-foot candles. Requesting a waiver from the section that states that the uniformity ratio of lighting around pump islands and under canopies shall be no more than four to one, and finally, the section that calls for the maximum uniformity ratio of lighting in a parking lot to be four to one.
Excellent, thank you for doing that, I apologize for the dog barking in the background, I muted myself, but I think when I need to talk, they're gonna hear it, at least till they stop doing that. So with respect to the landscaping, reducing it below the 10%, and the shade tree setback and the number of shade trees, what is it that you're proposing to provide?
So on the, so for the part about the parking area, our proposed site plan contemplates only, it's 5.12% of the parking lot would be dedicated to landscape islands, however, I would note that if we take a broader view of what parking lot is, as opposed to it just being the area located in front of the principal building, if we take a broader view, then it's actually 16.4% of the lot area in front of the building, and 20.8% of the total lot area is landscaped, so it just has to do with how we consider the area that we're talking about. In terms of the setback from the curb for the shade trees, so strict conformity would require seven shade trees, again, because the parking lot is located directly in front of the convenience store building, we can't fit seven, so the proposed site plan calls for two, one in each landscape island, and then five additional shade trees located elsewhere on the site. So the two shade trees do comply with that provision that dictates one shade tree per every 15 spaces. And then finally, because of the size of the landscape island, the trees have to be set back only four feet from the curb rather than the specified five.
Okay, thanks for going through that. And then, on your illumination, give me a broad overview of the difference between what you're proposing to do and what's required.
Sure, so with regard to the first piece, talks about the requirement, I'm sorry, one second, the requirement is no more than .2-foot candles at the property line, and we have one point adjacent to the sidewalk along Continental Boulevard that registers illumination of .6-foot candles. The second piece talks about uniformity ratio of four to one in the parking lot and under the gas station canopy. Our proposed site plan proposes a very slight 7.5% increase over the specified ratio under the canopy. And then finally, the proposed lighting plan, it has an average value in the parking lot of 2.8-foot candles, with the lowest value being .3, which results in a uniformity ratio of 9.3.
Excellent, thanks for going through that. I also just want to mention and recognize that Board Member Lynn Christensen has joined into the Planning Board meeting and is here now. Okay, so is there anything else in sort of a general presentation that you'd like to make so that the Board could take up the question of whether the application is complete and has sufficient information for us to review it?
The only other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Chair, is that, and as noted in Mr. Price's memo to the Board, we were scheduled to go to the Conservation Commission before coming back to you folks, but due to meetings being canceled during the pandemic, that hasn't worked out, but we are on the agenda to go before the Conservation Commission next week on Monday, so there wasn't the order we had intended to do it, but we are following up on that.
I always sort of take the moment to explain to applicants, the result of going in that order is that our decision, should we reach one tonight, would require that you meet whatever the forthcoming recommendations are from the Conservation Commission, and had you gone in the other order, it would allow us to individually examine what those recommendations are and decide whether the Planning Board wishes to require them or not. Are you okay with the idea that you're going to be sort of compelled to either follow the Conservation Commission's recommendations, whatever they be, or else come back to the Planning Board in the future to ask for relief from them, if you choose to do it in the order you're doing it in? Does that make sense? I don't know, Courtney, did you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, I think Courtney's video might have gotten stuck. Hopefully she'll reconnect and join us, either way. Okay, I think that the Board probably has had enough of a general presentation to decide the question of whether the application is complete, and to that end, what's the will of the Board with respect to the question of completeness?
This is Alistair Milns speaking, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept that we have enough information to enable us to make an intelligent decision on this project.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I will second the motion, Mr. Chairman, Nelson Disco.
That's Nelson Disco seconding the motion to find the application complete, and therefore, let's proceed to a roll-call vote. Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote in favor, aye, it is complete.
Alistair Milns, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of this motion.
Neil Anketell, how do you vote?
Aye, in favor.
Lynn Christensen, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
I, Bob Best, I also vote in favor, so that is 5-0-0 to find the application is complete. Members of the Board, do you wish to take up the question of the waivers, or do you wish to have general discussion, or perhaps to entertain any public comment that there may be? Which do you prefer to do next? If there's no particular suggestion, then let's take up the waiver, the waiver discussion. Is the Board wish to take up the waiver items individually, or consider all eight, or some subset of the waivers en masse?
Take them up individually.
Okay, so as they're listed in the staff memo, the first one is the one related to the 100-foot distance separation between two driveways, they're proposing 90-odd feet between them and the abutting property, and that allows them to keep the driveway a little bit further away from the Continental-Camp-Sergeant intersection. What's the will of the Board with respect to that waiver?
I would move that we accept that waiver, we grant that waiver.
Which of the statutory criteria supports your motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for that, I'm sorry, I gotta dig that out.
It is at the bottom of page two in the memo.
Specific circumstances.
Specific circumstance relative to the subdivision or conditions of the land is such that site plan indicates the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Yeah, it's the conditions of the land, Mr. Chairman, the fact, yeah.
Okay, is there a second for Nelson's motion to grant the first waiver?
I'll second.
Lynn Christensen seconds the motion, is there any discussion on that waiver? If there's not, I'll call for the vote. Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote aye, in favor.
Alistair Milns, how do you vote?
Vote aye, in favor.
Neil Anketell, how do you vote? Neil, you there?
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen, how do you vote?
In favor.
Bob Best votes in favor as well, 5-0-0 to grant the first waiver. The second waiver in the order listed in the application is the one regarding using 10% of the overall interior area of the parking lot for landscaped areas, and as the applicant described, there's apparently a few different ways to interpret that, and under some interpretations, they meet the standard, and in others, they have something on the order of 5% as landscaped areas. And I believe that the difference between the two is whether you consider sort of the outer perimeter by the roads to be part of that landscaped area versus whether you only count the two landscape islands at the end of the parking. That would leave us the opportunity to determine that the site is already in compliance and the waiver's not necessary, or we could determine that the waiver is appropriate and consider granting it. I prefer the second of the choices because it's a little bit clearer in the record. Is there any discussion by the Board members with respect to that waiver of the percentage of the site that's dedicated to landscape area?
Only the most.
Go ahead.
That we approve the waiver.
Which of the statutory criteria?
Specific circumstances relative to the subdivision or conditions of the land, and such subdivision indicate the waiver will probably carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Excellent, this is motion by Lynn Christensen, we're gonna substitute site plan for subdivision in that statutory criteria, since this is a site plan, but the criteria are otherwise the same. Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
Second.
Second by Neil Anketell. Is there any further discussion on this one? If not, then let's go down our list again. Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Alistair Milns, how do you vote?
In favor.
Neil Anketell, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen.
In favor.
And Bob Best is in favor too, 5-0-0 to grant the second of the waivers. The third one is pertaining to the requirement that shade trees be set back at least five feet from the face of the curb, because of the dimensions of their two landscape islands at the ends of their parking, which I take to be roughly nine feet wide, the tree centered in its spot will be four feet from each side, or something very close to that description. What's the will of the Board with respect to that waiver request?
I make a mo, this is Alistair Milns, I make a motion that we accept this waiver as this condition to the site, make it acceptable.
Okay, Alistair moves to grant the waiver under the statutory criteria that specific circumstance relative to the site plan or conditions of the land, and such site plan indicate the waiver will properly carry out spirit and intent of the regulations. Is there a second? Second by Lynn Christensen. Further discussion? If none, Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Alistair Milns, how do you vote?
In favor of the motion.
Neil Anketell.
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen.
In favor.
And I vote in favor as well, Bob Best, that's 5-0-0 for that waiver. The next one is Section 3.11.1.5, which is pertaining to the requirement that a shade tree be provided at a minimum ratio of one tree per 20 feet of parking lot perimeter. And what we heard from the applicant is that would normally require them to put in seven trees, they've got two trees, one in each end of their parking lot area, and then they put their other five trees elsewhere on the site, which are essentially, appear to be out towards the buffer between the parking lot and the road, rather than up next to the building. What's the will of the Board with respect to that waiver request?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept that the seven trees, in effect, covers what the requirements, and that the positioning of them is just subject to the site conditions.
Okay, so is that a motion to grant the waiver that they've requested?
It's a motion to grant the waiver, I apologize.
And it is because of which of the statutory criteria?
Specific circumstances of the site make it to impossible, that make justify the need for the waiver.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second.
Lynn Christensen seconds, any discussion? If not, Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Alistair Milns, how do you? Alistair Mills, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Neil Anketell.
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen.
In favor.
And I, Bob Best, also vote in favor. So that is five zero zero to grant the fourth waiver. Waiver number five is section three point one two D three V, pertaining to the requirement that all sides of a building that directly faces the public street have a public entrance. And of course, by the configuration of their building, all of their public entrances face Continental Boulevard and not Camp Sergeant Road. So they're requiring a waiver for that or they need a waiver for that. Seems to make perfect sense to me. I wouldn't want, as the applicant indicated, I think it'd be unsafe if he tried to put a public entrance on the side by the drive-through window. What's the will of the board with respect to waiver request number five?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, this is Alistair Mills. I make a motion that we accept that the requirement to provide entrance on all sides is unnecessary in the circumstances specific to the relative site conditions.
Okay, so Alistair makes a motion to grant waiver number five, subject to specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of land and such site plan indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and ten of the regulations. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Nelson Disco seconds the motion. Further discussion? If there's none, let's vote. Nelson Disco.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Alistair Mills.
Vote in favor of the motion.
Neil Anketell.
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen.
In favor.
And Bob Best votes in favor as well. So that is five zero zero to grant waiver number five. Waiver number six, pertaining to the requirement that the maximum illumination level at the property line be zero point two foot candles. That's section three point one three point E point three point Roman numeral two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we can accept the slight deviation from the standard for the lighting. And this is a motion that we grant the waiver that the conditions of the site make it acceptable.
Would you consider all three of the lighting waivers in one?
Personally, Mr. Chairman, I think we should consider all three of the lighting waivers in one motion. It's hardly worth fiddling around with each one at a time, but that's my personal opinion.
Well, if you'd like to make that motion, we'll see if it has a second and enough votes to pass.
I make a motion that we accept all three of the variations on the lighting as a one specific waiver.
Subject to specific conditions. And Lynn, Lynn Christensen seconds it. So it is a waiver of section three point thirteen E three two, three thirteen E three three, three thirteen F two. And they're all proposed as a waiver because specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land and the site plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out spirit and ten of the regulations. Further discussion? If not, let's vote. Nelson Disco, what do you say?
I vote in favor of the motions.
Nelson says yes. Alistair?
I vote in favor of the motions.
Neil Anketell.
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen.
In favor.
And Bob Best votes in favor as well. That is five zero zero to grant the remainder of the waivers. Do the board members have any other general discussion items with the applicant? Or should we consider some public testimony if there is any?
I was just, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
I was just curious. I recall, I thought I saw something about snow storage. And they put, they put two locations on the site. And I just, I can't seem to find that. I was hoping that they could point that out to me.
Courtney, are you able to point that out to us? Are you back on?
Actually, I, I could point that out for you.
Sure, please introduce yourself. I see your name on the screen, but I don't know if I know you.
Sure, my name is Ron Lezot, L E Z O T T. I am a, I'm the director of civil site for Maser Consulting, the site engineer for the, for the project.
I will take a look at that. I heard it was Matt Peterson. Okay, so Ron, can you point out where the snow storage is intended to be?
Sure, so, you know, we, we realize that, you know, to, to start off, there, there is limited area on site. And if there is an event where we do have a large accumulation of snow, obviously, it is the best interest of our client to keep the site in operation, make sure that it works as efficient as possible. So if there is any additional snow that does fill up the storage areas, we will have it taken or make provisions, have it trucked from the site. So right now, I don't know, can, can, can you see the cursor when I move it on the screen?
I cannot.
Okay. So it is intended that the areas would be pretty much along the east side on Camp Sergeant Road. Here, Louise. The plan just got wiped off the screen.
Casey, were you able to put the plan back up?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, one second. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Casey may be able to use her cursor to show us.
Yeah, I just might need some guidance.
Sure, absolutely, Casey. So actually, if we start at the Continental Boulevard driveway, as you come in that driveway directly to the west or to the left of your screen, there is a dotted area, you can kind of see like an outline in that grassed area. Yep, right where your cursor is there, there's kind of like a triangular area that would be for snow storage. As you continue straight down to the south towards the rear of the site where the trash enclosures are located, our second storage area would be directly to the east of the trash enclosures along that back area there. And then also continuing east towards Camp Sergeant Road in that rear corner area, a little bit more, right there, would be our third area. Again, the intent is during the smaller frequency storms to be able to store it in there. But if it does get to a point where we are in excess of those areas, we will make accommodations to have a truck from the site.
Is there a note on the plan that says that you'll have it removed from the site if it exceeds those areas?
That is a condition of a, that is a recommended condition of approval.
That they add a note?
They add a note?
Yes, we, we can absolutely add a note.
Yeah, it should be a note on the plan.
Yeah, I'd like to have a note on the plan and the staff's really good at sorting these out. One thing that I would want to make sure the note pays attention to is in the third snow storage area, the one at the southeast corner of the site. I want to make sure that the snow is not permitted to block the driveway sidewalk that's located along Camp Sergeant Road. So the sidewalk itself has to stay clear and you can store whatever you want. But the pavement area has to be, and then I'll, I'll leave it to the staff to figure out what the note should say along the line.
How, how about if I just say exactly you said, the southeast snow storage area will not be permitted to overflow onto the sidewalk area, adjacent sidewalk area?
Or you could just say anywhere on the site, snow storage can't be on sidewalks.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Okay.
That's good.
I think that resolves my questions about snow storage. Neil, you brought the topic up. Is there anything, any other questions that you have on that?
No, 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 I'm, I'm gonna explain my, my, that explained it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that you will have some, some challenges with snow storage with the smaller areas that you have there. And you may end up having to remove some off-site. But I, I agree with you, your site won't function without it, so I'm sure you'll take care of it. Other comments, general comments or questions about the plan? I know when we talked before, we had some questions about truck movements. Can you walk us through whatever there is to know that might be different from last time about truck movements?
The, the only truck movement that we added and we did supply with the last submission was a fire truck, which was requested. We did show truck movement for obviously the tanker, how that would get in and out of the site. And then we did supply an exhibit that shows the fire truck and how that would circulate through the site.
They have the fire truck one. Is there, which plan is the other truck movement?
Sure, so the, actually, I'm seeing it. There you go.
Okay, excellent. So is this the fire, yeah, this is the fire truck plan. Okay.
Yes.
And this is satisfactory to the fire department and fire marshal, fire chief?
We are still waiting to hear back from them.
Okay.
And we, and we do understand that obviously, you know, this, this could also be subject, any comments they have or revisions that they may request.
Excellent. So which sheet in your set is the regular truck movements?
The regular truck movements, I believe, hold on one second. That was actually, that was actually supplied as a separate exhibit with the set. Let me, unfortunately, I can't, let me go. There was a sheet that was called the fuel truck circulation. And that, that should have been with our original submission.
Okay. So nothing has changed from the discussion we had initially?
No, sir.
Okay. So I remember the discussion we had, sort of just using, you know, the eyeball test. It looked like there was a few areas where the truck would have to be driven with some precision to get into its spot without impinging on any of the parking areas or any cars that may be there. And the discussion that you guys had was that you felt confident you could do that. But also, confidence or not, you got to make your site work. And if you can't get the truck in, you can't get any gas in the tank. Is there anything more that the board should understand about your truck movement plan?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and you're absolutely right. Obviously, the site needs to be able to operate. You know, to be able to provide fuel to the site, obviously, for distribution and so forth. You know, a lot of our deliveries are made after hours. So a lot of times when the fuel truck is there, it is during non-peak hours of the facility. And a lot of times, you know, especially when the truck does come in, if you could see where our tanks are located, even if there is a truck in that area loading up, it will not impact any of the, any of the services to the store. You can see that it is, it would be away from the front parking area in front of the C store itself. And then usually, you know, while they're there dropping, like I said, a lot of times we do have enough room where cars can get in and out to maybe a few of the dispensers without impacting that dramatically.
Okay, is the borders of the landscape area on the Camp Sergeant Continental Boulevard corner, is that curbed so that there's a height difference between the pavement and that? So if a truck was pulling in there, it would know that it's up against a curb and it can't just keep running over the grass and mashing it down?
Yes, sir. They're, they're, the entire site is curved with a six inch high curb.
And how, how tall is the canopy? If the truck has to kind of make that turn a little bit tight, will it fit under your canopy?
Oh, absolutely. You know, typically for, for the canopies, you're usually about sixteen feet to the underside of the canopy.
Okay, so there's plenty of clearance for that. Okay. Does anyone else have questions about vehicle movements?
Yeah, I have one more, Mr. Chairman, having to do with the canopy itself and the design of the canopy. With some discussion of it at our last meeting and it's noted in the minutes. And in that set of minutes, according to the minutes, the, the applicant promised to get the board the information on full, that's the trees, excuse me. Neil Anketell asked about snow and Mr. Coakley responded they would still need to look at it. And they asked about snow, that's, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Okay, it was in the paragraph above that, the, they talked about the, the appearance of the canopy and that it was going to change, although maybe not. They didn't know exactly what the branding would be. And they stated that they would provide some elevation views of the canopy at our next, for the board to review, is what the minutes say. And I didn't see any of that in this package and I don't know if he's prepared to do that tonight or.
Yes, and I apologize for that. I do have some examples of the canopy that I could show you. If I shared a screen, do you mind if I share my screen?
I, I don't mind at all. Casey, are you able to give him those permissions or you want me to do that or?
I believe so, one woman.
Sure.
He should be able to do it, but there can only be one person sharing a screen at a time.
Okay, so I just unshared my screen.
All right, Ron, give it a shot, see if you can share yours.
Sure.
There it is.
Okay, so. So can you, can you see the image that I have up on the screen right now?
Yes.
Can.
Okay, so, so it is anticipated that the branding will still remain golf out here. You know, the, the difference here is that the existing canopy that is out there, it is a flat canopy. The main band around the canopy is blue. Whereas the difference you would see here would be that the, now the main band is orange with a partial blue band with the golf logo in it. This right here would, would most likely be the, the prototypical canopy that would be used, which would also match in style what's out there now and also match the rapid serve or, or the rapid refill, which is across the street from us to the north.
Okay, is the perimeter of the canopy internally illuminated sign, is that neon?
Yes, it is, it is, it is illuminated and I believe it is LEDs now.
Okay. And is the light that that canopy going to give off, is that can, is that accounted for in your lighting plan?
It's, I mean, as far as the band is concerned, you know, usually when you're looking at something directly, it, it probably won't be any brighter than, than what you see on the ID sign, especially the existing ID sign that is out there now. It isn't something that is going to be a glare or an issue.
There's not a lot of residential around there, so I'm not necessarily tipped over with the idea of being, being bright. But I would expect that your new canopy is going to be a whole lot brighter than your old canopy. If it's not, I think.
It will be, I mean, definitely underneath it will be, especially with the new lighting and especially with the new LED type fixtures.
Well, that's good if it lights just underneath. We're worried, I'm worried more about what would be visible from the road and would it be a distraction to drivers? And it's hard to tell from this. It's also hard for me, for some reason, to adjust the screen shot here so that I can see the existing canopy.
Yeah, Ron, can you scroll up to the existing? It's a different site. It's not exactly the same, but it's very similar.
Yeah, what, what I could do is, I actually have, can you see this?
Yes, I can see that very clearly.
Okay, so this is actually a street view. It's a little warped, obviously, based on what's out there. Let me zoom out a little bit, see if that helps. But you can kind of see what the existing canopy looks at, looks like right now. It actually runs perpendicular to Camp Sergeant Road. It's actually right on the right-of-way line near zero foot setback from that standpoint. But it does have the solid blue band that does run around.
Blue, yeah.
Hey, you're going to be further back from the road than that one and you rotated ninety degrees.
We are, yes. The, the, the new canopy will be moved up towards Continental. And, and then also too, don't forget, even around the outside perimeter, we do have landscaped areas where here, you know, there, there is no landscaping around the perimeter.
I know this isn't a subject we talked about before, at least I don't recall it before. But do you have a plan to have a video surveillance security system type setup at your station?
Yeah, actually, we do have Armon Kurian with us tonight. He is with Petroleum Marketing Group. You know, typically there is video. Armon, I think we'll be able to talk that out a little bit more. Is Armon still on?
I am here.
Okay.
Yeah, typically, we have internally inside the store, we'll have a panic button underneath the counter. And we'll have a video, we'll have a camera setting up right at the one register. Well, one camera at the registers and one at the front door to record everybody coming in and out of the store. We'll also have cameras on the MPDs, the pumps, so they can be viewed from the counter area in a better method than just visually looking out the window.
Okay, and those have some recording ability? I, I don't know anything about your station and what its history has been. I know that stations that are very close to highway exits tend to be ones that you hear about people putting the skimmers on the pumps and being able to do that. And I want to make sure you got enough light and video to be a safe. being able to do that. And I wanna make sure you got enough light and video to be a safe site, not have that kind of an issue. And, um, that's what I was after, is just to make sure that you thought through that, and make sure that we don't have those kinds of issues going on with the, with people stealing the credit card numbers with the devices because they're able to tamper with the pumps.
Agreed, and the recording is usually thirty days. That's how recommended.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Um, and I think having some enhanced lighting out there and a new fresher-looking site, I mean, I don't know if you've had a problem in the past. I would have no way of knowing that, but, um, I think the more you do to freshen up a site and make it bright and clear and plain and busy, um, reduces the incidence of those things. Plus, modern, brand-new pumps probably are as good as it gets in terms of trying to resist those things. So, um, thank you for walking me through that bit of it. Does any other board member have general discussion items? We still have not taken any public testimony, if there is any. Um, but I wanna finish the board discussion.
I do have one query.
Sure, Alistair.
Uh, on examining the site myself, the Continental Boulevard, most of the pump, the point where your tanker will drop fuel into your underground tanks, most of the filling points seem to be very close to the, where that entrance is going to be. And I was just worried that if you've got a tank, and I know you said they're gonna come in off hours and all the rest of it, but I, I recently saw what that entrance was severely blocked by a tanker delivering to half a dozen of your drop points, and I was wondering, are you gonna try and move those drop points, or are we just gonna have to live with the fact that you're dependent on the tanker driver being sensible and not try, not blocking the road?
Uh, yeah, no, based on, you know, where the pump, where the, um, tanks are located, um, the, the tanker truck will not be blocking that driveway. Um, you know, typically, like I said, you know, everything will drop off to the right, um, when the tanker does come in there, so we do have enough room where, again, the tanker itself does not have to be exactly over top of the tanks.
Oh, I understand that.
Yep. So, so, yeah, we, we, we feel confident that he will not be blocking that entrance. And also, like you said, I, I, I think you mentioned some, uh, uh, concern with possible spill? Did you mention that or no?
No, I didn't. I was just worried about the, the fact that you're depending on the tanker driver being, um, intelligent enough to pull over as far as possible to the, to the west, if you like, of coming in that entrance, so that people can get past both in and out.
Yeah, I think they will where their tanks are gonna be, but since you did bring up spills, go ahead and walk us through that, just so all of that's on the public record. I know that you guys think about that quite a lot, but I wanna make sure that we hear it.
Yeah, sure. Um, you know, typically, the, um, the pavement that is around the canopy and also around the tank mat area, around the perimeter of it, um, the pavement actually has ridges in it, um, and I'm sure you, you would see it, anybody's been to a service station. Um, there's usually about a row of four of them, and, uh, we call them kinda riffles or, uh, ridges within the pavement. So, if there is any little spill, um, whether it be at the MPDs or at the, uh, pump tank field, uh, field, you know, instead of it running off and then across the pavement, usually it'll be contained within those areas. Um, also too, we do have oil-water separators from a, uh, stormwater standpoint. Um, you know, we are still going through that process, and we will be, um, uh, going through a further review on the stormwater system, but, you know, we, we, we feel pretty confident that the measures and means that we have in place, uh, to accommodate that. Um, also, as is, uh, required, um, um, there are above the canopy, up in the, uh, upper area, there are, uh, sprinklers, um, for containment, God forbid there is a spill, possibly in, in, um, in ignition, uh, that is pretty typical with, uh, you know, the New Hampshire area, that all the camp, uh, canopies do have those provided. Uh, also, within the store, and even out by the pumps, uh, we do have emergency pump shut-offs. So, um, especially if somebody's at one of the MPDs and either forgets to pull it out, or for some reason, the, uh, the, uh, gas continues to flow, uh, we, we do have emergency pump shut-offs, um, in, you know, three or four different locations throughout the site.
Excellent. Thank you for going through the details on that. Other remaining general questions by board members?
Yeah, I have a little follow-up on that. I was curious myself and had a note to ask about it. Uh, first of all, did the, uh, do, uh, does our consulting engineer review things like this oil-water separator and all of that, the, all of this, uh, drain water? I mean, out, especially out where the tankers fill up, i- if there is a spill, goes directly into a, uh, catchment system, which eventually ends up in our wastewater treatment plant, I believe, or maybe not. Maybe it winds up in the bank of the Merrimack River. Um, can you, somebody follow through that? Where does that go, that overflow there?
Yep. Can you guys explain how your drainage system is designed to work?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, uh, we, we do have a system, and obviously, we are working with your reviewer and engineer. Um, we are working with the Conservation District as well, but, um, you know, typically, the system we do have on site is actually a detention, uh, where we, um, actually look to control quantity runoff from the site. Um, so actually, the runoff from this site under proposed conditions due to our underground system, uh, is actually gonna be less, uh, than what actually currently runs off from the site, uh, now. Um, also, with that said, is that we do have a structural water quality device, um, which is actually designed for, you know, typically, uh, service station sites where petroleum product, um, uh, is, is a possibility to be within the, uh, within the stormwater. So, 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 so that device there is actually set to separate it and also, um, act as a water quality measure. So, any, um, fluid or, uh, stormwater runoff that comes out of that system and, and into your main system, uh, meets, meets the water quality standards.
Excellent. Thanks for going through that. So, you have this, uh, water quality and oil-water separator device that is part of your system, and then you have, um, underground detention or underground infiltration?
It'll be underground detention. Um, typically with service station sites, um, and, and a lot of times, like, even when you're dealing with DEP or Conservation Districts, uh, usually they don't want you to infiltrate, um, especially if it is a service station site. Uh, so the system that we, we are proposing is a fully closed, uh, system. It does not infiltrate into the, into the subsoils.
Right. What's the capacity of the underground system, gallon-wise?
Um, gal, I mean, it is designed to maintain the, um, the design storms as allocated, and let me just double-check here.
Well, Ron's checking that, Mr. Chair. The one thing I'll add is that we are in discussions with DES right now to make sure that they're all on board and that we're all set in terms of permits with them, and so that's going on, ongoing at the same time.
Thank you for pointing that out. I know that their review of the UST is pretty stringent, so.
Yep.
Um, that's what I wanted to be sure of. I wanted to be sure, eh, eh, our engineers were looking at it from the town protection and as DES, this is, this water does go directly to the Merrimack River from here.
Yeah, um, unfortunately, I don't have that information, uh, directly in front of me, but it is designed to hold up to the, uh, hundred-year storm, um, which, again, we are coordinating with, uh, you know, everything is designed in accordance with, uh, New Hampshire, uh, requirements and regulations. Uh, so it will hold up and pass the one-hundred-year storm, um, and it'll actually reduce the overall flows from that storm. So, under existing conditions, you're looking at five-point-three-seven cubic feet per second is how we calculate the runoff. Under proposed conditions, that'll go down to below five or four-point-seven. Um, we do, uh, the water quality, uh, does, uh, achieve eighty percent TSS removal, and TSS is, uh, identified as total suspended solids. So, especially when you're dealing with a parking lot, uh, you do have salt that comes off of cars during rainstorms, uh, could be oil dripping, um, that's, that's typically what we treat from a water quality standpoint when we talk about TSS.
And where does the waste product go? Is it pumped out, or is?
Uh, yeah, yeah, the waste product is, um, like I said, it is maintained within the, uh, water quality, uh, device, and, uh, yeah, that, that is maintained. And, uh, we did submit a, uh, a, uh, an operation and maintenance report, uh, with, with, with our stormwater design.
Okay. So, that was, maintenance is one of the questions that was gonna be on my mind. I wanna make sure that the operations and maintenance plan is part of the, uh, Community Development Department's file as well. Um, but the, Nelson's question is, the outlet from your system is ultimately into the town's, uh, stormwater system?
That is correct, yeah. That's, uh, that, that, that's where it currently goes right now, under existing conditions. Uh, we are, we are maintaining that same point, and it is an inlet that is located on the, uh, west side of Camp Sergeant Road, directly in front of our site, so it's actually just north of our driveway on Camp Sergeant, towards the intersection.
Casey, can you confirm that Dawn's had her chance to look over all of these things and, um, has, uh, offered any feedback that she wants to offer on the stormwater system?
Uh, one moment. Um, I don't recall that we had any new comments from DPW. Let me see what the old one said.
Well, you're looking for that. I wanna compliment the applicant on striping the crosswalks on the, uh, east side and across the drive-through lane. Um, is there a sidewalk on Continental Boulevard to the west of your property that, that maybe we, there'd be a striped crosswalk across that driveway too, or?
Um, yes, there is, and, and, and we can certainly add that for you.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you for doing the two that you've done. I think, um, I, we don't often sort of stop and pause and take the, you know, ten-thousand-foot view of this, but compared to the site you have now, having a little bit of green and some shade trees, orientation of the building, um, and giving it a modern facelift from a relatively older-designed gas station is all a huge improvement on that corner and that site. And, um, thank you for doing that. I think that it will really make a difference in, um, what people, is often people's first view as they get off, uh, Exit Eleven and have a look at our town. Um, your gas station, the bank, the urgent care, that's kind of, you know, that's our doorstep. Or at least it's our doorstep from that, that highway exit. And, you know, maybe people might choose things other than a gas station if they had all of the choices in front of them, but a new, nice, modern, well-designed gas station is better than a, you know, whatever that is, nineteen-seventies, nineteen-sixties, nineteen-fifties, whatever the current one is.
Yeah, exactly, and, and, and also too, and I'm sure that you've seen the elevations that we submitted with the application, so, you know, it isn't a flat roof, and we'll have a, uh, sloped roof on it, uh, you know, uh, and a lot of treatment on it and then a clapboard siding, so, um, I think it'll absolutely be, be an improvement from what you have out there now.
I certainly think so. I certainly think so. Um, Casey, did you find the DPW comments yet?
Yeah, so, um, I found a letter from DPW dated March third. Uh, and it's quite lengthy, but there are three or four paragraphs that do go over drainage.
Okay. And so, is one of our conditions of approval that the applicant satisfy all of Dawn's comments?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's, it's just left as a, a very general condition, um, that does cover DPW comments.
Ron, have you guys seen those comments?
Um, I don't believe I have. Um, I know our response letter back was, um, March thirtieth. Um, and I know in our letter, we did say that we would continue to work with the DPW, so, um, um, if, if you could please provide the comments, we'd, we'd absolutely take a look at it and address them.
Yeah, you're absolutely entitled to have them. My only question is whether you want them before or after a vote that says you're gonna meet them all.
I'm sorry, Casey, did you say it was the, her March third memo? Yes. Okay, yes.
Oh, that was March third? Okay, I believe it's March third, um.
We have that, that's.
I do have those.
Yeah, that's the one we responded to, Ron.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So, you guys are comfortable if a condition of approval is to, is to meet all of the DPW comments? Um, it'll also have all of the peer-review engineers' comments as well. Okay. Other general comments and discussions by members of the planning board? Um, let's test out and see how this public comment thing works and see if there's first is any member of the public who wishes to weigh in, and then figure out exactly how I do that with Zoom. Um, are there any members of the public who wish to weigh in and offer the planning board anything to think about as it considers this site plan? I am not seeing any hands raised. Uh, Nick or Casey, do you see anything I'm missing?
Uh, since, this might just be what I'm seeing, but because there is a shared screen turned on, I'm not seeing that other screen.
Here, I'll, I'll turn that off for you.
Okay. Okay.
Is that better?
Okay, that is better. Uh, no, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay.
Don't have any callers on the line.
Excellent. I noticed, um, there was some email traffic generally about our meeting tonight. Were any of them related to this project?
No, I, I, one comment came in, and no, it was not related to this project.
Okay. Uh, with that in mind, uh, if there are no public comments, either in writing or during the meeting, then we'll close the public hearing and, um, give the board its last opportunity to have some discussion with this applicant and/or consider what potential final action the board would like to make. Not all at once.
Hearing a deathly silence, I'd like to make a motion, this is Alistair Milns, that we grant final approval to this, uh, application, subject to the various conditions that have gotta be satisfied from the notes that were provided for us.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion to grant conditional final approval? I saw Nelson's hand. Nelson Disco's hand went up first as the second. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, then let's vote. Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I'll vote in favor of the motion.
Alistair, how about you?
In favor of the motion.
Neil? Neil Anctel?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Lynn Christensen? I didn't hear you, Lynn.
Oh, her microphone is off.
You might be muted. Give her a second.
I'm in favor.
Okay, I heard that. Lynn Christensen is in favor. Uh, Bob Best is also in favor. Did any other members of the planning board join us during our discussion? I don't see any, so five-zero-zero to grant conditional final approval for this one. Thank you, guys. This is our first virtual, uh, application consideration, and it wasn't too lumpy. We managed to work our way through it. Thank you all for the process. Uh, I look forward to seeing the new facelift on the station as it goes forward.
Great, thank you, and, uh, thank, thank, thank you everyone for your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, our next item on our agenda is item number four, which is Adam and Christina Gilmer as the applicants and owners. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a two-lot subdivision. The parcels located at seven Fuller Mill Road in the R-one residential by MAP District, TaxMAP 4B Lot 167, case number, Planning Board twenty-twenty-dash-nine. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Uh, no, I, I don't have any comments. This is a very simplistic application. Uh, the, the memo that Tim wrote for this application, uh, has been unchanged. We did do, uh, a preliminary review, um, earlier when we weren't able to meet because of the pandemic, uh, and those comments that he made originally, uh, have been unchanged. Dude, there was never, uh, a second round of review.
Okay, so the memo we have is the most recent and updated one?
Yeah, exactly.
The June second memo. Okay, is the applicant here? Who's here for the applicant today?
Actually, Ken Clinton with Meridian on behalf of, um, Adam and Christina Gilmer. I'm gonna share my screen if, uh, that's okay with you.
Yes, please.
Okay, everybody should see the one-page subdivision plan.
Oh, there it is. See it now.
And, uh, so for the record again, Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services on behalf of Adam and Christina Gilmer, and I do believe Adam and Christina are logged into this Zoom meeting. I'm actually presenting for one of my, uh, staff, Sam Ingram, who was the project manager for this. However, he was, um, unexpectedly called out of state, so, um, I've got the present duties, uh, presentation duties tonight.
Pinch hitting, go for it.
Yeah, good to see you all.
Good to see you too, Ken.
So, this is indeed a very simple, straightforward subdivision. Uh, we're seeking a two-lot minor subdivision approval on Lot 4B, Lot 1, uh, MAP 4B Lot 167. It's currently five-point-one-six acres loaded, uh, in the western or central part of town in the R-one zone. The property is a bit irregular. It's bounded on the north by Amherst Road, on the east by Fuller Mill Road, and on the west by Farmer Road, so three roads, and then two abutters, the Allen Residence, and then we have the Comiac Residence generally to the south. Uh, the land itself, and I'll zoom in just a bit. Uh, the land itself, and I'll zoom in just a bit. The land itself is effectively bisected by a wetland that runs northerly southerly. On the east side, where their existing house is, is nearly level. Obviously, it has the house which was is fairly old, it has driveway, leach field, well with a well line. And all of the improvements and infrastructure are off of Fuller Mill Road. On the westerly side of the wetland, fronts on Farmer Road. And it's fairly gently sloping from a high point on the southwest corner. Gradually sloping down to the wetlands as you head to the northeast. Uh, we have a proposed driveway at this location with two hundred feet of safe site distance in each direction. We have a test spit, suitable test pit with a four K box here. We show a proposed well at this location. Uh, so effectively what we're looking to do is create a new line in this configuration here. Leaving from the Allen's southwest corner. And roughly running parallel with Fuller Mill Road until it hits the stone wall. Uh, so the resulting acreage is for the existing house would be one point one acres gross. And for the new lot, the proposed lot is three point three five acres, and it contains the majority of the wetlands. I should note that in order for this to occur, as this is in the R one um zone per MAP. Where the requirements of um acreage is one hundred thousand square feet contiguous upland. This project did receive in December of two thousand nineteen variances for the uh lesser amounts of contiguous upland. As well as a reduction in the depth of the lot off of Fuller Mill Road, is only about even hundred eighty-five or so. Feet of depth, so those were all received in in late last year.
Um, okay.
There is, just to follow up on a couple of things, there was some um staff memo comments regarding the applicability. Or consideration for a sidewalk waiver. On this, um after we read the ordinances in question. And out of an abundance of caution, we've liked to submit electronically, I suppose. Uh, a waiver letter, and I'll just read it into the record if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, dear board members, Meridian Land Services, Meridian, as agent for Adam and Christina Gilmer, hereby request a waiver. In the instance the board may find it required. From the Town of Merrimack Subdivision Regulations, Section four point zero six point one, Final Plan, Part R, which states. All residential subdivision plans shall provide for a paved pedestrian way or sidewalk. To be constructed along all existing or proposed collector streets, providing frontage to any lot or common area in the subdivision. My next sentence reads, although we feel that this requirement is not applicable, since this minor subdivision does not involve a collector street. Which is exactly the qualifying word in this requirement. So quite frankly, we believe it's not applicable at all, since Amherst's road. Farmer's Road or Fuller Mill Road, none of them are collector roads or streets. Um, and if it was found applicable, we believe. It should be deemed unnecessary by the board, as the phrase is, in accordance with Section four point oh seven, minor subdivision law line adjustments. Um, I've also included some excerpts of the subdivision regulations text. If um the board did not feel either one of those approaches were appropriate. Um, and as I said, in an abundance of caution, we are formally asking for a waiver. And we would base our waiver on that uh it's justified as strict conformant, it would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, because clearly, the spirit and the intent of the regulations. Is talking about sidewalks on collector streets.
Sure, I think you probably do fine with uh some of the provi- uh the arguments that you have about it being unnecessary or not even applicable. But let's take that up once we determine whether it's complete and the board gets to do that, but thank you for presenting the waiver.
Uh, and I'm not sure, ob- obviously in these times, I do have this electronically here in person. I have it poised, ready to email to town staff. And hopefully by reading that into the record, it would suffice as being uh submitted, if you will.
Um, satisfies my uh desire, although sending one into the staff so they've got one in the file probably doesn't hurt. Um, I don't think it has to happen before we get to that consideration, you can certainly do that tomorrow or something. Um, okay, uh, board members, do you feel like you've got enough information to render a decision and find the application complete?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion, this is Alistair Milns, that the information we've been given, I think we have enough. Enough to know that we can consider this as complete.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second the motion, Mister Chairman, Nelson Disco.
Motion made by Alistair Milns, second by Nelson Disco to find the application complete, if there's no further discussion, let's vote. Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Alistair Milns, how do you vote?
Vote in favor, Mister Chairman.
Neil Anketell, how do you vote? And Lynn Christensen, how do you vote? And uh Bob Best votes in favor as well, five zero zero to find the application complete. Uh, what's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's discussion of the sidewalk situation? Noting that we've got a couple of choices, one is to find that it's not applicable, because it's a minor subdivision, not on a collector road. One is to find that it's unnecessary, even if it is a minor subdivision on a collector road. And the other is simply to grant a waiver of the sidewalk. Our usual approach is number two out of those three choices, which is to find the sidewalk is unnecessary. Um, whether it's on a collector road or not, um based on the circumstances of the property. Um, and that's not a full waiver, that's simply a determination that under regulations, it's not required to have a sidewalk.
Mister Chairman, I favor your views, it's not necessary, because it is neither a collector road and it's a very minor subdivision.
Yeah, I don't know if we've defined Amherst Road as a collector road, but even if it is, we can still find that a sidewalk is not necessary. Uh, does anyone disagree with that approach?
Mister Chairman, I I just find it surprising that Amherst Road is not a collector road. But that aside, I completely agree with the waiver in this case, and it's not required here, it is. There's none within miles literally, and uh I I have no problem granting a. A waiver or just saying it's not necessary here.
Yeah, okay, um, any other members of the board wish to weigh in on that? It seems to be the consensus of the board that we would find that the sidewalk is not necessary per regulations, and if so. We usually handle that as a combined uh decision along with the rest of the vote, rather than voting on it separately. Um, so with that in mind, then there are no waivers requested or necessary. Um, does the board have any general discussion about the, with the applicant about the two-lot subdivision?
No problem.
Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in on the application? Casey, were any of our emails aimed at this application? I don't know if she was talking in, her audio wasn't working too good.
Uh, sorry about that, I forgot I was needed, uh, the one email did come in. Let's see.
Was that forwarded to me today by?
Uh, I, this one was for the other subdivision tonight, I got my applications mixed up. Uh, so no, we did not receive any emails.
Okay, no emails, no other public comment, and we'll close the public hearing. Uh, on this one, and what's the will of the board with respect to potential final disposition of this application?
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, this is Alistair Milns, that we grant final uh agreement on this. This proposed subdivision, subject to the conditions. There are that are on the papers that we have been given to us uh by, I think it was by Robert Price.
And and uh including a determination by the board that a sidewalk's not necessary.
Oh, sorry, Mister Chairman, I would be happy to add that additional thought that you have just given us.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second. Oh, second.
I think I heard Lynn's voice say second first.
Okay, no problem.
Lynn Christensen has the second, if there's any other discussion? If not, then uh Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the motion to approve.
Alistair, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the motion, Mister Chairman.
Neil, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Lynn, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And Bob Best votes in favor, so five zero zero to grant conditional final approval to the two-lot subdivision. Thank you, Ken, for the patience, and thank you for the presentation, professional as always.
Glad to see you back in business.
Yes, well, we're glad to be back in business as well, I hope we uh get you get any of your uh applications reviewed promptly if we're able to do that.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, item five on our agenda is five seven five Daniel Webster LLC as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of waiver, full site plan review for a change of use to allow. A mixed-use personal service tattoo artist and residential. Uh, use, the parcels located in the C one limited commercial aqua conservation. Elderly housing overly districts and wellhead protection area, tax map sixty-one, lot one oh two, case planning board twenty twenty dash ten. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before you refer me to the applicant?
Uh, no, for now I don't have any comments, uh this is another application that we were able to uh review. Previously, just because it was uh submitted to the planning board, uh while the planning board was unable to meet. Uh, so in in late March is when we got our first submittal. Uh, in early April, we did our first round of, staff did our first round of review. Uh, we we received a second submittal from the applicant in late April. Uh, and then in early May, uh we produced a second review letter, so the memo that you have in front of you is. Uh, just about the same as that letter that we produced last month in May.
Thank you for going through that, Casey, and so for just orientation purposes, the site's located. Uh, across the street from the North Shaw's uh grocery store, and it's a site that had once. Offered therapeutic massage and I think some other services, uh spa-type services uh in its location. And um then that discontinued, and now this applicant comes forward looking for the tattoo business. Um, is the applicant here? Is there anyone representing the applicant today? Is that you, Matt?
I think you have me muted somehow.
Oh, we can hear you.
Hear nothing from you.
You can't hear us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, I can't hear you.
You can't hear us.
Be interesting, alright.
What did we do?
Yes.
I'm gonna start it up then. We good?
Yeah, I I can hear you fine, I can hear you fine.
Matt Peterson with Keach Norseman Associates. Here representing seven five seven Daniel Webster Highway LLC. For the proposed site plan that's in front of the board tonight. Uh, this site is tax map six D dash one. It's lot one oh two in the Merr- with Merrimack Assessing Department. It's approximately ten thousand square feet in size and about point two four six acres. It's located at the corner of Daniel Webster and Rainbow Ave, um as you can see here, across the street is the Shaw's. Entrance, exit of the site. Currently that sits on this is a two-story structure with a walkout in the back, about eight hundred and eighty-four square feet. For each floor. Uh, what we'd like to propose here tonight is a tattoo parlor on the bottom floor. And uh existing residence of my two, two clients on this, on the top floor. This application was in, this project was in front of you. Back in two thousand and twelve, it was a massage therapy center, um as shown here. They were proposing two chairs as well, or two tables, I'm sorry, two tables, two massage tables. My applicant is now proposing two chairs for tattoo parlor, as you can see, this is the twenty. Uh, twenty twelve application is very similar to our application that's in front of you tonight. The only changes that are in front of you from basically the twenty twelve application in this one is that we. Striped the handicap space located right here, to have two spaces up on Rainbow Ave, and then we have two spaces. That'd be for the employees down here.
We can't see them.
We added four wheel stops from now to then, and changed the notes from the two tables to the two chairs. Uh, I just wanna bring it to your attention. That DPW's concerns were backing out on Rainbow Ave. They didn't like the application that we showed these two spaces right here that are there today. That were approved in twenty twelve, um that back out on Rainbow Ave. We feel that this is, again, was approved by the planning board, we believe, you know, they designed it and built it as approved. Now we're here looking to just utilize what was actually approved uh by the planning board back then. Um, I'll also say that, you know, I think you know the house. Some pizza down the street backs us into Daniel Webster Highway, I think that's a lot worse of a scenario, and I get it, they're not in front of you with changes. Uh, we are, so that's why we're looking at it. There's a waiver request for site plan application, um as you can see from this plan set. You know, ninety percent of the information that you would need on a site plan is here. Um, I think there's plenty of information to make a determination by the board. We're looking for the reduction of the parking spaces that would be required of the six to the four. That we showed here, again, we've got our two employee parking here, which are the owners of the building, and then we have our two-chair parking that are up in this location here. Um, again, I can't hear what people are saying, I'm not sure why, my computer says you guys have me muted, but uh could be me, I have no idea, ah, there you go.
There you go, hold up the notes, share your screen so we can see it.
What do I gotta do, go ahead. Matt, share your screen, oh, great.
There you go.
That sucks. Does that share it?
Yes.
Uh, there.
No?
There it is.
It did?
Yes.
So I just went, so now, you know, in your mind, everything I just said, rewind. And there's the pitch picture for it.
Excellent, thank you for for sharing your screen, I know you can't hear us, we'll try to figure out how to do some questions, um. Can you see the chat box?
Sorry, I, I've got all my buttons that say I'm not muted, but I can't find anything else.
We can, I can hear you.
Uh, Nick, are you there?
Yeah, I I have a feeling that his computer speakers aren't turned on, he just needs to turn up the volume on his computer.
Okay. Um. Let me, I I mean, I'm not comfortable doing this too much, but let me shoot him an email and maybe he'll see it.
I I, I sent him a, I sent him a chat and he can see it.
Oh, you did, okay.
Okay, so you can see the chat, Matt? Now I can't hear Matt either, he's muted now.
Oh, no.
Let me see. It's moving.
I I unmuted Matt.
Yeah, I just hit something, it said unmute everything and it's still.
Matt, when you mute, you're muting your microphone, you're not turning up your audio. You just need to turn your s- computer speakers on.
Well, I don't know what to do then.
Hang on one second.
I hear you. I hear you.
He, yeah, he, we can hear him, he can't hear us.
Oh.
I can call him if he wants to call me.
I just sent him a chat, or did he log out and try to log back in, is that what he's doing? That may be what he's trying to do.
Typing something.
Any better, Matt? Can you hear us as a speaker adjustment or volume adjustment?
Looks like no.
Jacqueline, is this your project? Jacqueline's muted too.
Yes, it is my project, sorry, I unmuted myself.
Okay, so let's work through it with you, I don't think this is too complicated that we can't work our way through it, even if Matt doesn't. Um, isn't able to communicate with us, I think the questions that we may have are probably pretty general. Um, so thank you for coming forward, thank you for presenting it. It does look like it's very similar to the old massage business that was there in terms of the way that the site will function. Um, tell, tell me a little bit about the way a uh tattoo business operates in terms of um the regulations that you're subject to. Sanitation or any of that.
Yep, um, so we are obviously a little bit different now with the pandemic that is happening, so we would be by appointment only. Um, so it would only be four people allowed in our space, um the two artists and two clients, one per each. Um, we would all be required to wear masks, we also do um work solely with disposables, so all of our equipment is disposable. Minus our machines and our beds, which does get sanitized. Um, and we have the hand sanitizer stations as well as the hand washing postings. So.
Masks.
Excellent.
Yep, masks are provided if they don't have their own.
Yep, so that you have to get inspected by the health department in order to operate?
Um, I looked into that and I wasn't sure, I was gonna reach out to the building department again, because between them and the state, they were kind of back and forth.
Um, I looked into that and I wasn't sure. I was gonna reach out to the building department again because between them and the state, they were kind of back and forth a little bit. Um, but we are licensed through the state of New Hampshire. We do have insurance. Um, we are a licensed business also.
Yeah, Matt, we can hear you. Yeah. I don't know if he can hear us yet. Okay, keep going. Thank you for that explanation. That kinda covered what I was gonna go after. So how many people are you gonna have working there at a time?
Just two. Um, myself and my fiance who um, actually both live on the property are the artists as well. Um, so it would just be us.
Okay, so you, two artists, two chairs, four parking spaces roughly is what you think you need?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so planning board members, you need to gather enough information from the applicant?
Oh, it says unmuted by the host. Uh, that should be good then.
I can hear you, Matt, if you can hear us, but I don't think you can.
But I still can't hear.
Oh, boy. Okay, uh, planning board members, do you have any completeness questions?
Uh, no completeness questions, Mr. Chairman. I, I do have this uh, recommendation from the uh, DPW. And uh, uh, I'll talk to that later if that's your desire.
Okay, sounds good. Let's uh, take up the, the motion. Somebody make a motion with respect to completeness.
The chairman, I, this is Alistair Mills. I've had a motion that we have enough information to consider this complete and enable us to make a decision.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second.
Lynn, Lynn second it. Uh, or I think it was Lynn. Um. Let's vote on that. Uh, Nelson, what's your vote?
Uh, I'll vote in favor.
Um, Alistair, how do you vote?
I vote in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Neil Anketell, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Okay, I think that said in favor and Bob Best votes in favor as well. So five zero zero to find the application complete. Um, this is a request for a waiver of full site plan review, um, as well as a waiver with respect to parking. What's, what's the will of the board with respect to a waiver of full site plan review?
Mr. Chairman, is there's no fundamental change to the, the overall picture of the property. I make a motion that we grant a waiver of full site plan review on the, on the basis that it's unnecessarily. Put, puts an unnecessary strain on the applicant.
Okay, so the first statutory criteria, is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Strictly from me provides unnecessary hardship to the applicant and it's not contrary to the spirit of intent of the regulations.
That's it. That's the first one of our criteria. Um, is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Nelson Disco uh, seconds the waiver of full site plan review. Uh, if there's no further discussion, let's vote. Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I.
Uh, Alistair Mills.
Vote in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Neil Anketell?
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen?
In favor.
In favor. Um, Bob Best votes in favor. Five zero zero to waive full site plan review. Okay, now we have got a question about parking. Um, Casey, what's the nature of the request for the parking waiver? Is there? What, what are the number of required spaces versus what they're gonna have?
Yes, so um, the number of required spaces is six. And the applicant is proposing four, including the ADA compliant space.
Excellent. Any member of the boards have discussion about the potential parking waiver? If not, it's, go ahead, go ahead Neil.
Chairman, I just had a question. I'm looking at the uh, at the print and it looks like there are five spaces on the.
Uh, yeah, so one of them is the striping for the ADA space.
Okay. So there's not five spaces, it's only?
Yeah, it's just considered four spaces.
Okay. And the uh, you said that it's, the, the residence is occupied by two people? You guys both have cars?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And alright, so it'll max out the, alright.
Yeah, one of your customers will have to use the handicap space if there's, whether there's a handicap customer or not.
We also have a shed. I don't know if on record it makes a difference, but the shed um, is big enough and can fit a full-size car. Which we do have one car, so that could always be stored in there as well.
Okay, so you think you got some overflow space if you had to have it?
Correct.
Okay. What's the will of the board with respect to the request for parking waiver?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the applicant's uh, waiver of uh, parking spaces. On the basis that the, uh, specific circumstances. In fact, indicate the waiver will carry out the spirit in the interim.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second.
Neil Anketell seconds. Um, okay, uh, if there's no further discussion, then Alice, um, sorry, Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of granting that waiver.
Uh, Alistair Mills, how do you vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Neil Anketell, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Lynn Christensen, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And Bob Best votes in favor. Five zero zero to grant the parking waiver. Uh, now, general discussion with the applicant about anything else related to the application.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, you can.
Uh, and, and I, I've been texting Tim. He had the idea for Matt to be able to participate, assuming.
I'm back on. I, I disconnected everything and restarted it back.
Oh, you can hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay, I didn't gather that. Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Shut it all down, start it over.
Okay, great.
Welcome.
Reboot. Thank you, thank you, Matt, for doing that, so.
Sorry about all that.
We're doing good.
No problem. Your applicant was doing fine without you, so she's running away with the show. So.
She looked a little stressed. I was watching her.
Oh, I hope you, we didn't make you stressed, did we? I would hope we're being kind.
I'll be okay.
Good, yes, don't be stressed. This is not a high-stress operation here. Okay, general discussion uh, with the application about anything related to the application, including some of the comments from DPW. Nelson, you wanna?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on, I happen to be in favor of DPW's uh, concept here of allowing. Uh, entrance off of Rainbow Avenue and having the traffic exit onto the lower leg of Rainbow Avenue, if you will. And I think that with a slight rearrangement of parking, this could be done. And would avoid the issue of backing out onto Rainbow Avenue, which they raise as a concern. And I feel is a legitimate concern, uh, given that cars come whipping in off of Route three. And off of, uh, out of Shaw's and come onto Rainbow Avenue direct. And uh, the, the, it, it's a hazardous situation. And I think that it can be easily alleviated uh, by allowing exit onto Rainbow Avenue uh, south. Rainbow Avenue, I guess that's east or maybe that, or it's south, but anyway. The other portion of Rainbow Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah. That's my position right now.
Matt or Jacqueline, do you have some comments on the idea of having your driveway kinda run in one direction where? People turn in at the, at the first part of Rainbow Ave and they go, go out on the back part of your lot. Would that work for you or is that a burden or would it affect you in any way?
Um, I don't know if Matt is on here, cause I know that's something that we had been kinda going back and forth with too, um.
That was. Are you there?
Yeah, one of the things that I just wanna point out, I agree Nelson, when you were looking at this, you know, taking it and going. Through different ways and how you can get the parking. We had done on the previous application, they had done a phase two for that. I think if their business grew in that type of stuff. Um, that is shown here on the application. Let me just see if I can still.
It's not in my packet, Matt.
Yeah, no, no, I know. I'm just trying to find my link and I lost my link. Um, what the issue is, is that the driveway in the back there is about twenty-one feet wide right now. So to make it twenty-four feet wide, I, we've gotta add two feet, obviously, easy enough. Comes down by the shed there. But then you've got to, um. Obviously put in the parking spaces that are twenty feet there. So another twenty feet puts me. Uh, the property line is twenty-seven feet. So I'll be, it'd be about seven feet off the property line. And um, if we push it all the way back there and then four spaces by nine, that's thirty-six feet. Yeah, so basically all the grass that you have on that side there is just gonna be four parking spaces. All the existing pavement that's right now would just stay as pavement. So we basically adding. A sea of pavement to the site here to accommodate two parking spaces for, again, this is, this is not high turnover. I mean, these people come and have a tattoo done. This is something that takes a little time and I'm sure when they come out, you know, they, they, they're taking their time on that a little bit. I, I just feel with this being pretty small, it was that you guys approved this in twenty twelve as this. Previous applicant, obviously, not mine, previous applicant built it as the planning board told them to. And now that's not good enough. I, I, I kinda don't understand that, I guess. I understand what DPW say. And, but it was approved for two tables, two chairs now, and they built it and now it's not good enough. So I, I just, we kinda wanna work a little bit. But I mean, I would say if we came back for an expansion to a third chair, absolutely. You know, we'd sit down and do something. Her business would be growing. She'd be doing well. We can put in some money at that point. There, she's obviously spending money now to redo the, the downstairs and that kinda stuff. So there's a balance, I guess, and we'd be asking for, if there was any. Leeway that the board would work with us on that.
Okay, Matt, I, I, I hear all you say and I would just offer that. Uh, they need not, parking spaces in this particular use need not be paved. So if that's any relief to you, uh, in my view, they need not to be paved. And uh, so I think you could work it without a lot of expense. And for the added safety, that's my perception today. I probably approved it before.
Yeah, I think I remember the discussion a little bit now and it was the same kinda thing. If they got a little bit bigger, then they'd have to do something different. Um, I don't know how much bigger you can get because if you added another chair, you'd be, you know, a chair and a customer is six spaces on the site. I don't know how you'd shoehorn that in there, but.
You can't, I believe you could. You'd just have to give up some grass, but.
I want grass though.
I would like to speak in support of Nelson. I basically disapprove of people backing out of a driveway into a road. Wherever it is, and I see it totally unnecessary for people to back out. I think it should be a one-way traffic scheme, drive in one way and drive out the other. It eliminates a risk and danger and I don't care what we approved in two thousand and whatever it was. I think in today's climate, it was, any improvement in safety should be grass.
So I wanna talk about this idea of safety and backing out because although these are our own views and preferences. That's not a parking standard. Um, every downtown has people that pull in angled parking spaces and then they back out into the. Main street of downtown Concord, downtown Manchester, downtown Nashua. And that's not particularly earth-shattering to anybody to do that. Um, so when we talk about, you know, backing out into spaces. Um, I, I get it that if you have the choice, that it makes sense to apply a choice. But we're not actually applying something that's a, a parking design standard that is, you know, universally accepted. Wide all over the place. Um. And that's probably why we considered what we considered last time. Um, you know, if someone was, was proposing their own personal driveway was, you know, twenty feet long and they pulled in and backed out. Um, is what it is. Um, so I, anyway. I was just hoping that we would temper the idea that, you know, there's only one way to do this with respect to the parking. Um, I, you know, I walk up and down downtown Concord, cause that's where my office is. But downtown Manchester is the exact same way. You have angled parking off of Elm Street. Um, in Manchester and off of uh, Main Street in Concord and people back out. Um.
I'm with you, Bob.
I hear what you say with respect, this is Alistair Mills. There may not be a parking standard, but I damn well think there should be.
Uh, maybe so, but we gotta kinda, well, I don't know. And Lynn, what, what was your thought? What was your comment?
I, I'm with you. I don't believe that Rainbow Ave is a. Raceway of any sort. There's not a lot of traffic on that road. We back out of driveways all the time, all over town. And I don't hear of any real significant problem safety-wise. I don't, I don't see. The requirement that we change this. I'm, I'm perfectly happy with it as it is.
I, I don't have much occasion to drive on Rainbow Ave, but the next block up where you, when you come out of the. Little plaza where Pleasant Smiles Dental is and where the um, Village Eatery is. Um, that little side street that you can enter off of on their parking lot. Um, you can obviously from their driveway pull out forwards into that little side street and then onto DW Highway. But as you do that, I mean, you could literally take a nap in the middle of the road there. There is just not, you know, people whizzing off of DW Highway. Onto at least the next block up and I don't know that they're, whether they're comparable, seem comparable to me. Um, uh, so, so there isn't so much traffic there that I imagine we're gonna have, um. Uh, well, any more than there's ever been there before in the history of the site.
Understand, and on the other hand, uh, when you talk about Manchester, you say, well, that's a place you expect people to be backing out. But here you don't and I guess my concern would be that you're just coming through the light and down the hill and whoops, there's somebody in the road. Uh. You know, how serious? Leave it up to the board. I just would prefer to see it that way. It's easy to do, doesn't.
Can I, can I make a suggestion that might appease everybody here? If in my waiver request, it continues to, it, it's already for parking for number of spaces, but how about for delineation of them? What if I was able to use the existing pavement out there and uh, me and the owner work out where four parking spaces could fit because two of them are owners? And they could pull in off of Rainbow and then just pull off, but it's, they're gonna be kind of, there'll be parallel spaces. Obviously, this is calling. People don't just show up to get a tattoo. They're gonna call, make an appointment. So she'll know they're coming and that type of stuff. If I designated four spots. Like what I'm getting at is like the two for her and her boyfriend, husband, that they're behind each other. They, you know, they would have to move one car to, to move the second car. That's okay. I could use the existing pavement and have people, like you said, park on the, 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 the sidewalk, um. Park on the driveway that's heading down towards Rainbow and they would pull out that way. But they'd be lined up, you know, they'd be, they'd be parallel to each other.
Yeah, so you'd use two stacking spaces for the owners and then the customers would have flex, more flexibility in their car.
With that, I'd be okay with that.
I'd be okay with that.
Yep.
And it would, it would go along with the waiver we requested for the site plan, so we wouldn't be having to worry about regulation on.
Yeah.
And we get something to staff and staff could either send it to you guys or, you know, sign off or something like that.
Um, I, I'm comfortable with that as long as the staff's comfortable with taking a look at whatever it is you come up with and signing off on it.
How about it, staff? Casey.
Casey, you think you guys could take a look at a tra, a, a parking layout that essentially has two spaces that stack? Or, or more limited access and two that are, um, a little broader access?
Yeah, so I mean, we, we could take a look at that. I guess it's, it's kind of a similar warning as you made earlier about the Conservation Commission. Uh, if you approve it tonight with that vague approval, then it would just leave it up to staff to make that determination.
Yeah, applicant would be kinda confined or else would have to come back to the board again if they couldn't.
Right, and start this process all over again. So it's either that or do a continuance. So staff can do a review and then the board make a decision afterward.
Let's try to avoid a continuance. I wanna, I mean, these applicants have been waiting for a while to get some ideas going. I'm sure they wanna get their business going and. Um, we gotta be business friendly in this environment if we can be. Um, doesn't mean changing standards, but it does mean administratively getting things going for folks. Um.
Uh, another comment I wanna add, uh, and I'm sure you know this, just to keep it in mind. Uh, if you do decide to make a, a final conditional approval tonight. Uh, to uh, make any amendments to what we drafted as, for conditions as needed.
Okay. So we'll take a look at those as well. Okay, um. Is there consensus support on the board for this idea of allowing the applicant to redesign their parking layout a little bit and let the staff review it?
Chairman, this is Alistair Mills. I would say that is an excellent suggestion that we could move this project forward.
Okay. And Nelson?
I am so in agreement with Alistair Mills.
Excellent. I am as well. Lynn?
I'm okay.
And Neil?
Yes, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so that would, um, we, we'd still have to take up the waiver for the number of parking spaces. But the applicant would be able to come up with a configuration in collaboration with staff that worked for everybody.
I think we, Mr. Chairman, this is Alistair Mills. I would suggest we incorporate that into a sort of waiver that also gives the staff the the right to. Approve it if they can possibly can and to avoid avoid it coming back to us.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Um, so is there a motion to grant a parking waiver, uh, to allow four spaces where six would normally be required? And allow the staff and applicant to collaborate on what that configuration would be? Encouraging the staff to be as flexible as possible to avoid further planning board review. So I make that motion?
Uh, I will make it except for to make it, uh, so that, uh, backing out onto room. Uh, onto it, to avoid backing out into Rainbow Avenue at the downhill side. Okay, everything you said was great up until that point. What I'm gonna do here is just rearrange it in some way so that they don't have to back out onto Rainbow.
Okay, is there a second for Nelson's motion?
I'd be happy to second that, Mr. Chairman, Alistair Mills.
Matt, do you have a good understanding of what we want from you and can you do that?
I do.
Okay. All right, all I wanted to hear. Um, any further discussion? Okay, let's go through the vote. Nelson, how do you vote?
There anybody in the public who wants to look at it?
We're just devoting on the waiver.
Oh, sorry, forgive pardon.
Nelson, but thank you for watching out for me. Um, Nelson, how do you vote on the waiver?
I vote in favor of the waiver.
Alistair, how do you vote?
Vote in favor.
Uh, Neil?
I vote in favor.
Lynn?
In favor.
And Bob Best votes in favor, five zero zero to grant the four uh, space parking waiver. Um, okay. Any general discussion with the applicant about anything else with their application? Are there any abutters for interested citizens who wish to weigh in? I don't see any. I don't see any hands up. Um, was this the one that we got the uh, email about?
No.
No.
Okay. Just gonna keep trying till I find the right application.
Yeah.
So with that in mind, we'll close the public hearing and it's appropriate for the board to consider whatever its final disposition would be.
Chairman, I I I would vote to approve the application with the uh. Recommended changes that we've made tonight to the staff's memo.
Okay, motion motion to grant conditional final approval subject to the conditions in the memo plus any changes we've made here tonight. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Alistair. If there's no further discussion, Nelson, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of that motion.
Uh, Alistair, how do you vote?
Vote in favor of the motion, Mr. Chairman.
And Neil, how about you?
I vote in favor.
And Lynn? And Bob Best votes in favor, five zero zero for conditional final approval. So you are conditionally final approved. And good luck, and I uh, look forward to seeing your business open.
Thank you so much.
Customer, I just tattoos scare me, but other than that, you're still welcome.
Now, I have a question for clarity purposes about that. Uh, sure, so, uh, when you guys said with changes as discussed, uh, that means deleting condition six A. Uh, whi- which is Dawn's comment about, uh, one-way traffic.
Right, it's deleting that one and then adding in that condition on the si- on the parking waiver, which required there to be some redesign of it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I meant, clearly. Yeah.
Okay, um, thank you, guys. Let's see, what's next on our agenda here?
Have a great time, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Welcome, yes.
Okay, uh, application number six on our agenda is Granger Revocable Trust as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a two-lot subdivision. The parcels located at two-two-five Natick Road in the R-one residential by soils district. Aqua conservation and wellhead protection areas, tax map two B, lot thirty-four, case planning board twenty twenty dash eleven. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Uh, one moment.
Gonna go find my email, huh?
I, yep. Uh, so so this is another two-lot subdivision. Uh, let's see. This one is also fairly straightforward, just like the other two-lot subdivision we had on the agenda tonight. Uh, and and I, this will come up more in discussion later, but I just wanted to, uh, point out that I believe on your agenda. R-one, yeah, on your agenda, the lot is listed as R-one. Uh, it turns out that the existing lot is actually R-four. The existing house is hooked up to, uh. City water and sewer. Um, however, the newly, the proposed newly created lot. Uh, will not be able to be hooked up to sewer, and it will either be considered R-one or R-two.
Okay.
So so just kind of an error in the agenda. It's not an R-one lot.
Excellent. Thank you for that correction. Yeah, it looks like Tom Carr is the only one left in our meeting today. From the public. Tom, I know that you, we got an email that said you were juggling agendas with another planning board. Are you here with us now?
Oh, you're on mute.
Your lips are moving, but no sound.
Let's unmute, Tom. There you go.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Tom Carr from Riddi, and I'm here tonight to present this plan for Granger Revocable Trust. Um, and thank you, Casey, for um, clarifying the R-four district. The um. We've obviously read the staff report and um, the. The issue of connecting to the sewer is a surprise to us, so we um, certainly um, would agree with staff that we'll have to continue this meeting until next month. Um, until we can resolve exactly how to approach this, um. Um, you know, it's just, it's in the R-four district. We never, there's no, uh, let me go through the the intent of the subdivision if that's okay.
Sure.
This is a family-owned piece of land. Uh, one of the family members lives at the uh, current current house located at two-twenty-five Natick Road. And the intent of the subdivision is to simply cut off. A residential lot that can be kept in current use, um, gift that to this certain um, family member. And retain the remainder as undeveloped land. There there are no intentions of developing it, developing it at this point. By the family, um, there's no, it's not on the market for for sale for development, um. We did delineate and locate all of the wetlands on the parcel because the family. Um, made a decision to, you know, find out what the parcel has to offer. So obviously. We went to that step, um, did a boundary survey, flagged and located all the wetlands and um, and produced this plan. Um. So. That being said, that's the intent, and of course, because there's no um. Imminent development plans by the family, naturally, we didn't. Call the sewer department to find out what uh, subdivision impact may have and and how we could address that, so. Again, the uh, no connection to the sewer is a surprise to us and. Um, not, we're not quite sure. I'm I'm not sure Mr. Price knows how to handle it. Uh, it may be a question for legal counsel on how to handle it because we are appropriately zoned. However, there's a restriction on further sewer connections, so. Um, although we are in the R-four district. There's no rights apparently, and the zoning map is essentially incorrect based on the sewer department's position. The only other thing I wanna uh, bring out, Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, before we. Open it up for questions and comments is that we would. We would also agree with uh, my partner Ken's position on the waiver request for a sidewalk. This is is not a connector street. We uh, we just didn't even think this was even applicable to the subdivision, so that's w- we've taken the position that. That that part of the regulations is not applicable to this particular two-lot subdivision. Now, if in the future. The remaining parcel was developed into a subdivision, then obviously that would change things. Um, but at this point, it's it's a subdivision of two lots to gift a twelve, uh, nearly twelve-acre lot to a family member and retain the rest. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to the board for any questions or comments. Um, Casey. I don't have, uh, I'm not versed in the screen sharing like my partner was. Though, uh, if if the plan needs to be brought up, if if you could bring that up, if anybody has uh, specific questions about the uh, the plot.
Yeah, I could, I'll I'll take you a few minutes, but I could, I can get that up there.
Yeah, let's see what we need. As we maybe just have some general discussion, and it looks like the staff's recommendation is. To continue the acceptance to a later date and allow some time to address the things, Tom, that you mentioned. Um, but do let's let's tackle the general general discussion of the board. It does seem like a very simple two-lot subdivision and, you know, once it sort of irons out the. Various staff comments and things. I don't foresee anything that would be complicated about this one or difficult to approve. Um, it seems to certainly make plenty of sense for people to be able to divide up a big parcel into two still very big parcels. Um, I agree with your view on the sidewalk. It just doesn't seem like, uh, well, a- as a minor subdivision, it would fit in that category of where the sidewalk waiver isn't even necessary. Um, for all the reasons that you talked about, you're not on a uh, collector road, and even if you were, it's still just not a necessary place to put a sidewalk. Um, and so, you know, other than what you've told us about so far. Um, it seems to be just an administrative uh, function to uh, provide time for the staff review and and all of those details to fall into place. Um, does any member of the board view it differently or have any questions that they'd like to have addressed early on while we're here with the applicant or?
Mr. Chairman, it's Alistair Mills. I'm a little surprised to learn they can't get sewer because. I mean, you're right on my back door on Peter Road is where I live. So I mean, Joey, uh, Joey Road and all Gale Road, they've all got sewer. I'd need an awful lot of explaining why they can't put a sewer onto that site or connect it up to Joey Road or Gale Road. I I'd like to know why the the wastewater division don't wanna do it.
Um, Casey, was there anything that was provided from the sewer department as to their explanation and further detail of that?
Uh, no, nothing written, uh, other than it's a capacity issue. Uh, I I'm aware that there was some back and forth, um, and that was the final decision, but as far as the details go, I'm not informed.
I can speak to that a little bit, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
Historically, this par- parcel and the parcels adjacent. Are sewered to a line that was put in. To connect to the Nashua sewer system. And the uh, adjacent properties that have sewer. Have uh, access to the Nashua sewer system and not the Merrimack sewer system. The uh, that was done with federal money, and it was done with certain caveats and limitations on it. So Nashua is not able, or at least not willing, to add more sewer to it. To that line because it's gon- becomes their responsibility. So I think that's how we come to this particular decision, I think, you know, this is my recollection of it and it. May or may not be absolutely correct, but uh, the uh, original intent was to sewer. The uh, Natick Estates, which my colleague may be familiar with. That that who states created a problem which required federal assistance to alleviate. And that's how we got into this situation and finally made agreements with Nashua to accept a certain flow of sewer. And we're there, you know, we've done all that was agreed, and they're not about to agree anymore. I can see why. Now, that's that's a little background information. Uh, I'm not uh, ready to uh, approve this kind of a subdivision where it is not. Not sewerable, and um, I also had a problem with the plan that was submitted because, dang gun. I had magnifying glass and all, I could not read those elevations that were on page, uh. Page, uh, whatever.
Well, we're not being asked to to render a final approval tonight or even even come to the question of acceptance.
Okay, so we'll leave it there. Maybe I helped, I don't know.
Um, with the with the question of whether it's sewerable. Um, with two lots that are sixty and eleven and a half acres. Um, there's other solutions to, I mean, with with each one basically being one home lot. Absence some further development down the road. Um, they got plenty of opportunities to solve their sewer problem if they ever wanted to construct on them.
But Mr. Chairman, could I further add that I hear what Nelson said, but since that date when that's the sewers were put in. I mean, the auto fair bu- business is considerably bigger. Enterprise have put in a a fairly large system there. I cannot believe that, you know, a few extra gallons can't go down the line. I really can't.
Oh, I I think from a so, engineering or or scientific standpoint, you're a hundred percent correct. What I took Nelson's argument to be is that this is a Merr- Merrimack subdivision that's connected to the Nashua. Sewer system based on an agreement that was. Imposed at whatever point with, on whatever conditions, and I assume that agreement probably says you can have sixty-five connections or thirty-four connections or. Whatever the number is and.
Gallons, yeah.
And and from Nashua's viewpoint, they can look at it and say, look, you're not getting another connection. Um, if this was our own town, I think that you could, you know, have some discussion with our local departments and say, could you, you know, look at it a little bit more more expansively, but. Once you cross over into another town, it's just too easy for one town to say, you know, nice story, but not my problem. Um, but either way, um, you know, putting a septic system, a residential septic system on eleven-plus acres and sixty-plus acres is really not an issue.
I have to agree, yeah.
It's, it, I mean, it we, it's not the preferred way. And certainly if you're dealing with, you know, higher density and one acre smaller lots, you'd have to worry about whether that would all work, but. Finding one, you know, two thousand square foot septic field in sixty acres, I'm pretty sure you can pull that off.
Ought to be able to be done. You're correct, yeah.
And the and the smaller lot is eleven point four acres, so. Um, and, you know, it doesn't necessarily look like there's any immediate intention to even do any building on these things, so.
I do wanna bring up that there is the fringe issue.
Yeah, that makes sense, and and in terms of not accepting it for review tonight, that allows them a chance to go see the zoning board and. See if there's some relief that they can get for that or any other reason that they may need it. I don't know what it would be, but.
Right, I think that was obviously um, part of staff's comments to get a a variance. I'm quite certain that the zoning board would would see the hardship here and and grant that. I can't speak for them, but um, it would be a delay, but. But uh, under the circumstances. You know, um, I guess that's appropriate, you know. Fact of the matter is, we are in the R-four district. The subdivision is plotted according to the R-four district regulations, so technically and probably legally, it's perfectly correct. However. Um, under the circumstances with sewer. Um, there is a legitimate concern that that probably needs to be looked at and decided on, and ultimately, I think, uh. You know, if if uh, if this is certainly the case for the Nashua sewer district, then the town should rezone this area appropriately in the future, so. Applicants like Granger don't get caught up in this, because if there was no solution. There's a big financial expense completed with no result. So the zoning map really needs to be addressed if there are no sewer connections in this R-four district. With all due respect.
I think that's one way to to resolve or address the problem. I think also that, um, as you mentioned, if you present this situation to the ZBA. Uh, you know, I would not deign to speak for them, but um, they are uh, a uh, fairly. Um, uh, receptive group in terms of considering the situations that applicants find themselves in. And I wouldn't be surprised at all if they provided you with some level of relief.
I agree.
Okay, um, is there anything else about this application, Tom, that you need us to look at or discuss tonight?
I don't think so, as as you guys mentioned, it's very straightforward. It's it's um, you know, it's simply a. Uh, cut lot, uh, thirty-four off to gift to the family member to re- to continue to continue to. to gift to the family member to re, to continue, to continue to reside there and leave the remainder parcel indefinitely.
Yeah, I get it.
Not too long.
I hardly even can tell that there is a residence on thirty-four, but I suppose there is.
Yeah, sheet, I think sheet two, uh, shows the topography and wetlands and so forth.
Oh, yeah, there's the building. And so the thirty-four is actually sewn and it's only thirty-four dash one that is, is even an issue.
Yeah, so I guess it's further down, Casey, maybe sheet three or four, but that has the topography and all, uh.
The topography is just illegible in my version of the plan because it, it is so shrunken down. I couldn't follow it.
Yeah, it's, I, Nelson, you know, we had, we had, uh, we had, we agonized overturning a two lot subdivision into a, a five sheet plan set. You know, it's, it was the best we could do to reasonably, um, you know, present the application and.
I just say that so when you come back, you come back with more detail.
Well, I mean, I don't know if, I don't know about that. It's, it's a two lot subdivision, it's.
Oh, yeah, no, I bike back, I mean, back to develop that lot.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. No, I agree. If it ever gets into a development phase on that, it'd be, you know.
I'm sure that's where we're going.
Be back into a twenty sheet plan set for that.
Okay, so, um, the staff is recommending that we continue the question of, uh, completeness to a date certain. What's a date that you like, Tom?
Uh, well, I mean, I, I don't know how quickly we can get on the zoning board if that's ultimately what, what, um, we resolve with, with staff and possibly your legal counsel for advice on this. I'd prefer to, to continue it to next month and if, if we can't make the agenda, then we can simply table it until, um, August.
All right, I think our, we don't have a early July meeting because of the Fourth of July holiday. Um, what's our second July meeting? It's usually the third Tuesday?
Oh, so that'd be July twenty-first.
You think you can make that, Tom? You'd have to have your information to the department by probably like the seventh or, you know, something like that.
I, I don't, I honestly, without looking at the, the zoning board's, um, submission schedule and stuff, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I can't answer it. I, I can't, um.
So the next one after that's just two weeks later in August, first week of August, whatever the first week.
On that, I think that's, that's fairly safe. We should be able to hit the August meeting with, with any relief that we need.
Somebody got a calendar handy to tell me what day?
I do, Bob, but are you, and I can text him, are you certain that we are going to have an early August meeting?
No, not certain of anything.
Okay, I, I didn't know if you had a discussion with Tim because I, I, I'm only informed up till July. I don't know what's happening in August. I'm not sure because we're doing these virtual meetings. If, uh, we're, we're trying to just do the one a month instead of the two a month. Let, let me, if you would rather do the early August meeting, let me text him to make sure that's, uh, the meeting that he's planning on, um, scheduling.
Ultimately, the board can.
Does it really matter to the point of time tonight? Surely we could say it to an August meeting and leave it to the staff to advise us what that August meeting might be.
Well, if you don't put a date certain, then you gotta renotice all your butters.
I'm glad, yes.
Sorry.
That's always your fun.
I'm not available the last two weeks, it's just FYI.
We, we do have, uh, confirmation on the July meeting though.
Yeah, we're certainly having the second July meeting and so we could put you on the calendar there and if you're not ready by then, we'll just punt you to the next one.
Why don't we do that so that we don't have to agonize over the August date? Um, and then we'll, we'll try and meet that date. If we can't, we'll advise staff that we can't make it and to, to, uh, we'll request a tabling until the next available meeting, whichever.
Yeah, I think that's the cleanest way to do it.
Right.
Okay, so the second July meeting is what date?
Uh, July twenty-first.
All right, is there a motion to continue this application till July twenty-first with no further notice to a butters?
I'll make a motion that we continue this matter till July, uh, twenty-first with no further notice to a butters and at a location to be notified in due course, whether it's in the town hall, where we hope it might be, or whether it's on the same fashion as we're doing tonight.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Second by Lynn, um, oh, Nelson, how do you vote?
I vote opposed to that because I won't be here.
Okay, Nelson says no. Alistair, what's your vote?
I vote in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Neil, what's your vote? Uh, Lynn, what's your vote?
I'm in favor.
And Bob Best is in favor, so four, one, zero to continue to July twenty-one. Thank you, Tom, for hanging out and working with us on our virtual meeting and we'll see you in a few weeks.
No problem. Thank you very much. You guys did a great job.
Thank you for saying, so I hope we're doing okay. All right, where are we on our agenda here?
Just as a matter of point of order, we did have, um, a memo from, uh, an outside, uh, citizen. I think we should read that, that memo into the net, into the minutes for the sake of correctness.
Let's keep it for the one, once we accept it and we have a public hearing, because we haven't had a public hearing on this one yet. We haven't accepted the application.
I'll, I'll buy you on that one.
So we'll keep that one, um, on tabs so that we have it for consideration on July twenty-first when we actually take some action.
Sounds great.
Excellent.
It would be nice to know what it said, but, okay.
I mean, I don't mind distributing it to people or having it be a part of people's packages, but it was, uh, I don't even know what it said. I didn't read it. Didn't read it yet. Item seven on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. We have, uh, Greenfield Farms Bonds. Casey, what are we doing with Greenfield Farms?
Uh, yes. Uh, so just a little earlier today, I don't know how many of you had a chance to read this memo, but Dawn did, uh, type up a memo and, uh, I believe Rhonda emailed them out to everybody uh, regarding, uh, three different roads at the Greenfield Farm subdivision. It's for two brand new road bonds and one, uh, reduction of an existing road bond. The, the reduction is for McIntosh Court and the, the new performance bonds are for Cider Court and Crabtree. Uh, so, so we just need a motion from the planning board approving these.
Okay, what are the dollar amounts that we're approving?
Yeah, sure, okay, uh. So the reduction for, uh, the performance bond for McIntosh Court, the original bond, uh, was four hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And it's getting reduc-, uh, reduced to, uh, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay, and the two new performance bonds?
Yep, uh, so the one for Cider Court, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and two.
Okay.
Uh, and the Crabtree Performance Bond, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and six.
And I assume the nature of Dawn's memo is that she finds these amounts to be appropriate?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, what's the will of the board with respect to one reduction and two performance bonds as described in Dawn's memo?
Mr. Chairman, before we do quite that, I think there's one other significant piece on the, the last, uh, sentence or last paragraph, I apologize, last paragraph on the notice from Dawn saying that the owner has requested a performance bond of three years. And that he understands that if he hasn't got the project done by the end of the three years, there's a problem. So I think we need, in our m- motion, we need to amplify that point that we are only agreeing to this on the basis that it is a three-year completion. If not, there's gonna be a problem.
I think that's our standard, isn't it?
Uh, normally it's two years if my memory is right, Mr. Chairman. And I don't think we've ever quite done a, a bond, three sort of things together like this, but maybe I'm wrong. I'm prepared to be corrected.
Um, yeah, you, I, I think you're right about the two-year bond, although a three-year gives the applicant additional time. So it's sort of relaxing a standard rather than heightening one. Um, but in terms of voting on either setting or reducing bonds and doing them in collective votes, it seems that we've done that a time or three.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll pass.
Casey, with respect to it being a three-year versus a two-year bond and then obviously, um, it's a deadline to perform it where the bond is essentially called if they don't complete in three years. Um, is that basically our normal standard approach to this or is that different?
You know what? I don't know. I'm not sure.
Okay, so let's, um, be safe rather than sorry and say that, um, Alistair, uh, what's your, your, your intention is that our motion calls specific attention to that particular fact, Alistair?
I would, I would like to make a, make a motion that we agree to the suggestions than in the memo from Dawn too early. But we want, as the planning board, we want to ensure that the, the emphasis on the, the last paragraph is, is specifically made clear to the, uh, owner of the pro- project.
Okay.
Uh, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Uh, so I just got a text from Tim and he informed me that likely next month, the two, the two new performance bonds will likely get reduced.
So they're almost done already. They don't even need their two years or three years for any of that.
All right.
So non-issue. All right, so, uh, Alistair has a motion to set the bond amounts according to Dawn's memo. And even if it's unnecessary, it doesn't hurt to emphasize that there's a time limit on the bonds. Is there a second for that motion? Second by Lynn Christensen. Any further discussion? Nelson Disco, how do you vote?
I'll vote in favor of the recommendation of the Director of Public Works.
Is, okay, uh, Alistair, how do you vote?
Favor, Mr. Chairman.
Neil Anketell, how do you vote?
In favor.
Lynn Christensen, how do you vote?
In favor.
And Bob Best votes in favor, so five, zero, zero to adopt the, um, bond recommendations that Dawn has laid out for us. We also have a request for an extension for our Crosswoods Path. Uh, it says site plan extension, but I assume that's subdivision, is it not?
Uh, no, it was a site plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking Greenfield Farms, not Crosswood Path. Um, yes. So, uh, we have, uh, from Chris Bova, an email, um, dated June third, uh, addressed to me requesting a three-month extension to fulfill the conditions from the January seventh planning board approval. Um, and so the board can certainly take up that request. I don't know what the need for extension is, but we're ten, we tend to take these in six-month leaps rather than three, uh, just to avoid being too tight and too short. Um, but I don't know, maybe the applicant only has small things to attend to and three is plenty.
Yeah, I do, we did get revised plans, uh, and a revised drainage report, uh, pretty recently, it might have been yesterday.
So maybe the applicant is already done and the three months is gonna be plenty? Or should we just be safe and go for a six-month and not have an issue?
I think we go six months.
All right, Lynn makes a motion to grant a six-month extension. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nelson Disco. Any discussion? Nelson, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of this motion.
Alistair, how do you vote?
Favor of the motion.
Neil, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And Lynn, how do you vote?
Obviously in favor.
And Bob Best is in favor as well, five, zero, zero to grant a six-month extension to the Crosswoods Path Site Plan. Um, are there any other, uh, discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern? Um, I would like to offer up a little bit of a PSA, um, and announcement to folks that may be interested in serving on the planning board that we've got some vacancies. Um, I don't know, we probably haven't met in so long. I'm not sure. We had a public announcement that, um, Dan Ricker had resigned from, um, his membership on the board. Um, and so that leaves a full spot open. Um, and there's also two alternate spots open. And, um, we should do what we can to try to recruit some people who, uh, want to invest some time in their community and, and help us review some of these applications. And if there's anybody out there, uh, contact community development or take a look at the town's website. If, e- e- even if, uh, you're hearing the call to volunteer, but you're not sure about planning board, there's six other boards that I'm sure have openings and, uh, opportunities for people as well. And then not all land use boards, there's, uh, all manner of town committees and things. So I'll use my little bully pulpit to offer up that plea for help for folks that might want to volunteer. Anybody else have any discussion items? Okay, item eight is the approval of the minutes of March third, twenty twenty. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted, but I did want to make a comment before, uh, before we got to this item. And, uh, that it was, uh, that, uh, I wanted to suggest to the planning board that we undertake some work on our master plan now that we have a little bit of, uh, breathing room, can I say? Uh, we have a lot of things sort of hanging as a result of the Route Three Bicycle Pedestrian Plan Submittal and, uh, other items that are open from the master plan for, uh, projects that this board could and should undertake. And I'd like some consideration given to those. Um, otherwise I'll make a motion to approve the, the minutes of, uh, whatever it was, my April, whatever.
March third.
Understood. Yeah, so let me, um, expand on your comment a little bit. We'll take that under item seven, discussion items. Um, uh, it's always a well-received message to say, you know, but let's check in on our master plan. And I know Tim was helping us with some things and we did some, uh, amendments to our, uh, sub, uh, site plan and subdivision regulations and made some changes. You did specifically mention the bike ped thing and that is not an open issue anymore. We've adopted that plan as far as I know. Um, and so check that box and, and.
Yes, we have, but we haven't done anything with it. I think there's some action items in there for the planning board. Uh, it's, it's one thing to adopt a plan, but then it goes on the shelf as the same.
Um, well, let's take a look at that and see. I think that some of those things were, were physical development priorities more than something that falls within the planning board's ambit, but.
Could be, could be.
But if there are some, let's take a look at them. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then let's move on to the second half of your comment, which was the motion on the minutes. Is there a second on Nelson's motion to approve the minutes of March third?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll second that motion.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, let's vote on the minutes. Nelson, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of approving the minutes.
Alistair, how do you vote?
Favor of approving the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Neil, how do you vote?
In favor.
Lynn, how do you vote?
I'll abstain because I didn't even watch it on TV.
Okay, and I will vote yes. And so that is four, zero, one to adopt the minutes of Tuesday, March third. Uh, before we take up the question of adjourn, I could say thank you all very much for the work in, uh, our first virtual meeting. Um, I'm, I find the need for all of the roll call votes to be a little fatiguing after a while, but I guess it is what it is. Um, I can live with that. I think if, uh, if there's anything that's fatiguing right now, it's the term social distancing and I can't wait to drop that from the American lexicon. Hopefully soon. Um, thank you guys for a lot of hard work with this and li- and I'm glad we're able to accomplish some work and it'll get smoother as we go forward and practice these a little bit. I'm glad that this is, is a arrow in our quiver now as we go forward if we ever need to do it again. Maybe on a snow day or something like that when we wanna sm- switch a meeting. With that in mind, it is appropriate now to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, when I make a motion that we adjourn and congratulate ourselves that we've done such a wonderful job tonight.
Thank you for that. Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I will second it, Mr. Chairman.
Nelson seconds. Okay, roll call vote to adjourn. How about that? Nelson, what do you think?
I vote in favor of adjournment.
And Alistair, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of that motion, Mr. Chairman, and I'd also like to inca- uh, add a rider that we should thank Nicholas LaValle for his help in making this happen.
Yes, that is a. Nick, Casey, Tim, uh, um, Bob Price, everybody participated.
Who sent us the code to get in here?
Yeah, all of that good stuff. Okay, so let's finish voting. Neil, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And Lynn, how do you vote?
I think she's gone.
Already gone and Bob Best votes yes, so four, zero, zero to adjourn. And we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. I normally say don't forget turning your microphones off, but I think once we. And we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. I normally say don't forget taking your microphones off, but I think once we.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack National Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.